Good evening. Welcome to the January 9th, 2018 Milford Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. First order of business is the election of officers. Is there a nomination for chairman?
I nominate Joe Trazola.
Second.
Are there nominations for anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of Joe Trazola for chairman, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, ayes have it.
Thank you, commissioners, for giving me the honor to represent this board again. As mentioned, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals January 2018 meeting. Mr. William Sodha has been reappointed as a member again for a five-year term, so I want to mention that. So this meeting will come to order and let's...
Not quite yet. We need to elect a secretary.
Sorry?
We need to elect a secretary.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we need nominations for secretary? Mr. Sodha?
I nominate John Vassino.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay. Seeing there's none, the nominations are closed. Mr. Vassino, you are secretary for this coming year.
Well, they should actually vote on it, though. Joe, they should actually vote on it.
I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Vassino. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. This evening, item number one. If you're here for Seaview Avenue, that's been postponed. If you're here for item number three, 1698 Boston Post Road, that has been withdrawn. So let's stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
So we need an official roll call, please.
Just for the record, Mr. Michael Casey was sworn in last night. Not here that I can see, but perhaps he'll join us later. Mr. Trazola?
Here.
Mr. Vassino?
Here.
Ms. Barante?
Here.
Mr. Sodha?
Here.
Mr. DuBois?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also present, Meg Green, our recording secretary, Stephen Harris, our zoning officer. If you feel there's someone on this board that might be a conflict of interest to your application, please let us know. Okay, with that, Mr. Secretary, item number two.
Item number two on this evening's agenda, 40 Crabtree Lane, MBP 12/62/2 in an R-7.5 zone, section 9.2.1, appeal of zoning permit dated 10/24/2017. Applicant Danielle Berkery for Robert Farokas, owner, RMF Builders LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Harris, members of the board. My name is Attorney Danielle Berkery. I'm a lawyer at the law firm of Brenner, Salzman &amp; Wallman on Whitney Avenue in New Haven, and I'm here on behalf of Bob Farokas of 35 Deerwood Avenue. And as was just read, we are appealing the issuance of a zoning permit for the property that is now known as 40 Crabtree Lane. The zoning permit was issued based on a consolidation map that was approved through the city planner with the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board in 2016. And what I have submitted for the record tonight, along with a cover letter basically outlining the argument that I'll make before you folks now, are all of the materials that were submitted in 2016 as part of the consolidation map and lot line adjustment that was subsequently approved. So those documents are incorporated into the record. They already are somewhat in the record in the files here over at Parsons. So the lots in question, referred to now as 40 Crabtree Lane, are also formerly known as lots 132 and 133. There is a map called Laurel Manor where you can see the lots. The map is in color. The lots in question are highlighted in yellow, so it's a good thing to look at for your reference. These lots were previously part of subdivision that were subsequently made nonconforming as a result of the adoption of zoning regulations. So they were pre-existing nonconforming lots up until a point. But there's quite a history to these lots, and I think that sort of plays out in the documents that were submitted. And as you can see in the material, that there has always been a tremendous amount of concern by the neighbors and the neighborhood regarding the development of these lots. So back in 2001, the Wrights, who were the owners of record at the time, they were also the owners of record who filed for the consolidation map, they submitted an application for 6.4.2 to get both lots 132 and 133 approved as prior nonconforming existing lots that were approved under the subdivision that you have in front of you. And back at the time, Peter Crabtree was the zoning enforcement officer. The application was made to him, and he, in fact, certified the lots as, you know, prior nonconforming lots that could be built upon for two lots. As part of the 6.4.2 application process, signs were posted on the property, and as soon as the neighbors saw the signs, you know, the signs sort of served their purpose, and neighbors came out and said, whoa, 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 these lots have always been considered part of another lot that is located adjacent to these lots. And the neighbors submitted evidence to Peter showing that there had, in fact, been structures on the lots. There had been a barbecue pit on the lot. There had been gardens on the lot. There was testimony about maybe a swimming pool on the lot. And even testimony from the daughter of the former owner, who said, hey, my parents owned these lots, and they treated these lots like part of the adjacent conforming lot. And as you folks are probably aware, there is a doctrine under the zoning regulations called merger. And when there are these little old lots that are treated as part of another lot, they can be considered merged into that lot. And once they're merged into another lot, they essentially lose their identity as individual lots and are no longer eligible for treatment under 6.4.2. So in a memorandum that Peter Crabtree actually submitted to this board, he changed his mind and said, whoa, I've got all this evidence, and these lots are merged, and we cannot certify them any longer under 6.4.2. And in fact, an appeal had been made regarding these very lots to this board. And Peter informed the board that once evidence was presented to him regarding structures and use of the lots, that the lots were merged, and they should not be certified under 6.4.2. In addition to the memo that Peter submitted to the board, the minutes from the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this board on June 12, 2001 are also submitted, where there is additional testimony from the neighbors about how these lots were used. Peter testified also, again, just reiterating that after he spoke to the neighbors, saw pictures of how the lots had been used, that, again, the lots had been merged and were not eligible for 6.4 treatment. He said that, he basically said that nothing could be done on these lots short of the property owner applying for a variance. So that was what happened back in 2001. As you can imagine, neighbors, many of whom have lived there, if not their whole lives, for quite some time, operated under the impression that these were no longer building lots, and nothing could go there without perhaps maybe a variance from this board. So we need to fast forward approximately 15 years, and an application was submitted to the city planner and the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board in order to consolidate these two quote-unquote "lots" into one lot, 40 Crabtree. So everything that was submitted to the ZBA was submitted to the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board. And although the Wrights, who were the applicants in 2001, never appealed the decision of the ZBA, the determination that the lots had merged, even though they never appealed that decision, they essentially submitted an application for a lot line adjustment and a consolidation map attacking the decision of this board, stating that, in fact, the lots hadn't merged, there wasn't any evidence, at least as far as one lot, and that, in fact, they could consolidate these under section 6.4.3, in addition to section 2.3.1 under the subdivision regulations. The chairman approved that request, and all of a sudden, these two lots, which, again, the neighbors believed were not building lots, nothing could be built upon, all of a sudden became a building lot. But this was somewhat unbeknownst to everybody except the applicant and the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board. Under the procedure that was used, the application for these lots was not on an agenda before the Planning and Zoning Board. It was not published in the newspaper that a decision was going to be made regarding these lots. And instead, once the decision was made and the map was signed by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant published a notice of that decision in the New Haven Register. It was a one-time publication, and of course, nobody in the neighborhood saw it, so no appeal was made from that decision. However, you know, some months later, the lot was sold. There was subsequently activity on the lot, and again, well, all of a sudden, this thing has become a building lot, and the neighbors, who knew nothing of the 2016 decision, said, hey, what's going on here? They'd been quite involved in all of the decisions regarding this lot. They went to see Mr. Harris. They went to the zoning office and found out, hey, this thing has all of a sudden become a building lot. So they appealed, and Mr. Harris issued a zoning permit on the basis of the consolidated map that was filed on the land records. At that point, we filed an appeal of the zoning permit on the basis that the consolidated map and the lot line adjustment were improper decisions, and a zoning permit should not be issued. And that brings us before this board today. It's our position that these lots were not eligible under 6.4.3, which is a provision in the regulations that allows for the consolidation of previously existing nonconforming lots in order to reduce the nonconformity. However, we feel that this board already decided that there were no longer lots that could be consolidated. Additionally, under section 2.3.1 of the subdivision regulations, which allows for this lot line adjustment, allows the chairman to do these lot line adjustments, these consolidation maps, when you're not, in fact, creating any more lots. However, because this board had already decided that the lots had merged and no longer existed, we, in fact, believe that the decision did create another lot. It created that one new lot consolidating both of the old lots that had already merged. And while it might seem like not a particularly big deal, you know, two little lots put together, put one house on there, we've got several neighbors here to testify that the impact to this neighborhood, which is a relatively small neighborhood, is pretty severe. The applicant is actually going to have to put a road in, and so all of a sudden, a small little piece of land that was undeveloped is now going to have a house on it, and there's going to be a road that had previously just been a paper street. Additionally, some of the neighbors will actually testify that they bought their property after they were told by multiple people, including real estate agents who knew the area, knew the zoning, knew the history, that this is not a building lot. So we certainly don't want to be here contesting a zoning permit. We would have preferred to have appealed the decision of the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, making these two quote-unquote "lots" a lot once again. But unfortunately, nobody knew about that decision, and it wasn't until there was activity on the property, and we knew that the zoning permit had been issued by Mr. Harris, that this thing was brought to the surface. And that's what brings us here before you folks today. I know that's kind of a lot of information that I've just given you. It's a long history. It's, like I said, some, you know, 15 years in the making. But I also have some members from the neighborhood who would like to just give you a little bit of a sense of the history of what's going on over there and the impact of this decision. So if that's okay, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, who else will be coming up speaking? Please come forward. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Farokas. I live at 35 Deerwood Avenue in Milford. I'm here to ask the board to rescind the issuance of the zoning permit at 40 Crabtree Lane. The same property was deemed a merged lot and lost its identity due to a structure on the property by Peter Crabtree and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The chairman of the Zoning Board did not take this into consideration when he made this decision to approve the lot line adjustment and consolidation. He only made the decision on behalf of the applicant. He didn't take into consideration the effect it would have on the six adjoining property owners and also the taxpayers of the city. Now, because of a lot line adjustment and a cessar map consolidation, it is now considered a nonconforming building lot, 50 foot in an R-75 zone. The lot has the same boundaries, the same square footage, and the same footprint. So how could it change from being not to be built on to be buildable? Also, we'd like to address the issue of why the challenge was made now. There was no meeting agenda listed in the paper, the minutes listed in the newspaper agenda. The chairman approved the lot line adjustment with no public discussion. Our contention is, if you do not publish this notice of the agenda, then why would I be looking for the results of that meeting to file an appeal? Something as dramatic of this change should be posted to the surrounding property owners by mail. This will affect the neighborhood with cutting down of trees in a wooded area, the building of a road to access the property. The chairman had no idea about the surrounding area. The lot line adjustment is done by the staff. This will impact our property values and our quality of life. Also, Milford has a conservation commission whose statement about preserving wooded areas, both large and small, should be taken into consideration. So I'm asking the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny this application. Thanks.
Sir, can I ask you just a question, please? I have a question for you. In the beginning of that, when you started reading it, you said the, it was the Planning and Zoning.
I'm sorry, Appeals.
You said it was the Planning and Zoning.
I'm sorry. When we went and did it, we did it with the Planning and Zoning Appeals with Peter Crabtree, and at the time, it was Errol Van Hees was the chairman.
But my question was, was it the Zoning Board of Appeals chairman at the time, or was it the Planning and Zone chairman?
We appealed it to you guys, Zoning Board of Appeals.
The Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else speaking? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Colin Strong. I live at 25 Deerwood Avenue. So this lot that we're talking about is right behind my house. As Danielle mentioned, a number of the neighbors have lived in the neighborhood for a very long time, some of them their entire lives. I moved in last fall. I'm the newest member of the neighborhood. I was told repeatedly, repeatedly, by the selling real estate agent that this had all been dealt with before. This was a done deal. The property that I was buying was the property that I saw in front of me. I was aware that there was a paper road, but again, was told repeatedly, this paper road will never be built because this issue has already been dealt with. The area behind your house is not a buildable lot. Therefore, it will remain the woods, and the paper road is yours to take care of. Another one of our neighbors that is not here, him and I have bushes in between our properties. I take care of the paper road on my side. He takes care of the paper road on his side. His father took care of that paper road for 20 years that he and I now take care of. I would have never bought this house if I knew that this was the case, that this was going to be built there. I came home last week. Two of the trees on the paper road are now tagged, saying that they're both coming down for road extension. The real estate agent that repeatedly told me that this wasn't going to happen coincidentally then represented the owner of the land and sold it to the builders. He was also repeatedly told us he was good personal friends with the previous owners of our house. When I bought this house last fall, I was told repeatedly that this was a done deal, only to find out that the previous spring, this had been overturned. Again, coincidentally, the owners and personal friends of this real estate agent, he got them out of the house, sold me a bad bill of goods, and now, not only am I taking a hit, the entire neighborhood is. Obviously, I am taking a fairly large hit from what is going to be the perceived value of my house, with the paper road and this house right in my backyard. The entire neighbors, I would say it's about 10 to 12 houses in the neighborhood, the value of these houses are going down for one small house to be put in. It's not right to me. I don't know about you guys, our neighbors. This is something they've dealt with before. This is something that is new to me, but I would have never bought this house if I knew that this was the case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking on this appeal?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Gerald Sheehan. I live at 46 Crabtree Lane. I'm one lot away from this proposed building lot. And back in 2000, when we had that lot shut down totally, the city even sent us paperwork saying it had lost its identity as a building lot. And, well, I know we're not in court, but there's always the clean hands doctrine. The owner, Stuart Wright, came to Peter Crabtree, and I'll say it out loud, he lied to him, bold-faced, that there was never a shed on that property. It was never used in conjunction. We got together and did a lot of research and legwork, and we found two photos that the state had taken, their overhead photos, and I found one because they took this photo in particular at the time when there were no leaves on the tree, and then it enabled us to see the shed was there. And we showed that to Mr. Crabtree. He took out, I don't know if it was a slide rule or engineering tool, and he put it on that, and he said, that's either all the way on that lot or at least straddling. And in the end of that session, after that fight, Peter Crabtree gave testimony, and that's in the minutes, that he called the Wrights' household to ask about this, and he got Mrs. Wright on the phone, and Mrs. Wright said, oh, I told my husband, when we sold that house, we should have gotten insurance on that property in case some kids were playing on the shed and got hurt. So they knew it was merged. You wait 15 years, you think everybody that lives there was dead, and you come back for another shot at it. It's just not fair to the neighborhood. This has been a very stable neighborhood, and everybody takes care of the properties there. It's a small green spot that attracts a heck of a lot of wildlife. You'd be surprised. And I just think it's a discredit to the entire neighborhood that you're allowing this to happen in the manner it happened. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking on this appeal?
My name is Fred Palladino. I live at 15 Whitney Avenue. What has to be said has already been said very correctly by the neighbors, and I concur with what they say. I want to add something else. Twice, we went to Mr. Harris's office when we first started hearing that this was going on. Twice, he says, I have nothing in the folder about that. He had the information about the original decision, but he had nothing in the folder about anything happening with that property. Now, I believe in the integrity of my fellow man, but I am a little concerned that so many times, we got wrong, incorrect answers, or worse yet, things were done quietly. When this thing first came up years and years ago, billboards had to go up, meetings were held, people got to say what they had to say, and it didn't go through. Now, somebody makes a decision behind closed doors, without talking to anyone in the neighborhood, without taking any of that into consideration, anything that we might have had to say, or anything that was in the folder from the previous problems. So I'm sorry, I'm getting a little excited, so I'm going to end with saying, please, take a look at this and just make sure everybody's doing the right thing, because that's not the way I feel at this point.
I have a question for you. You said twice you approached Mr. Harris. When was that? Do you have the dates?
I don't have the dates, no. It was recently, though.
Is it this year?
My wife and I went to his office.
Is it this year?
Yes.
This month?
I'm sorry, 2017. When we first started hearing that something was going on, I was contacted by a realtor who was looking to buy my property, which I've refused to sell over the years for the same reasons that have been stated. And we were told, he had the information from Peter Crabtree. So the first time, he said, I have nothing in the folder. And then we kept hearing about it. So we went back again. Now, he takes the Peter Crabtree thing, and he says, well, we decided Peter was wrong. Well, is that how it's done? I mean, first of all, we have a big discussion to establish what this property was all about. Now, all we have to do is say, well, we thought Peter was wrong. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe someone else was coming forward. Could you come forward, sir?
Good evening. My name is, excuse me, Robert Secandi, and I live at 27 Deerwood Ave., and I live next to Colin at 25. The only thing I wanted to mention is that I purchased my home in 2010. And when I purchased my home, I did put up a fence in my backyard and adjacent to 25 Deerwood Ave. And the concern was, I was also concerned whether that was a building lot or not, so I physically went down and met with Peter Crabtree myself in 2010. I didn't check any records with Peter, but I did meet with Peter, and I said to him, I was going to put a fence up. I got my permit, and I did ask him if it was a building lot, and he verbally did tell me back then that it was not a verbal, excuse me, it was not a building lot. So I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know whether that is libel or not, with not being in writing to show me any documents, but being a loyal person I am, and we closed officially on the house, and I put the fence up officially with a permit. I don't know if the Planning and Zoning Director told me that this was not a building lot, that was part of my decision to purchase this house. So I'm just standing here with just a little confusion on why I would have received that verbal information from Peter. And the second issue is, it sounds like we need to ask Peter, call him on record here, if he can ever give us his official opinion of what happened here. And I don't know if he can do that, but I'm just saying that as a resident of 27 Deerwood Ave.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else speaking on this appeal? Anyone else speaking on this appeal?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Harris, and I'm Milford Zoning Enforcement Officer. I'll try to be brief. The only issue before the board tonight... The only issue before the board tonight is whether a zoning permit was issued for a valid lot of record. So the short history, well, first of all, let me say that the lot consolidation testimony you heard is interesting from a historical point of view, but is not relevant to the issue tonight, which, which is, was a valid zoning permit issued for a lot of record. So, first of all, on April 6th, 2016, an application for a lot line adjustment and lot consolidation was received by Planning and Zoning Office. On April 20th of 2016, lot consolidation map was filed on the land records and given the file number of AB-3619. This act consolidated developer lots 132 and 133 into new one lot of record, having an address of 40 Crabtree Lane and a map block and parcel number of 1262-2. On April 26th, notice of that lot consolidation was advertised in the New Haven Register. The statutory time limit of 15 days to appeal this action by the Planning and Zoning Board to Superior Court lapsed without such an appeal being taken. Because no appeal was taken, that solidified the fact that 40 Crabtree was a legal lot of record. And then on October 24th, 2017, a zoning permit was issued for 40 Crabtree Lane because the Planning and Zoning Board created this lot about a year and a half previous to that. So, all of this talk about, maybe the board should rescind the lot consolidation, or maybe revisit the merger, is really water under the bridge at this point, because this board has no authority to vet what the Planning and Zoning Board does. Only, only the Superior Court can overturn a decision by the Planning and Zoning Board. So again, the only issue here was, A, do we have a legal lot of record? And the answer is yes, because the Planning and Zoning Board approved a lot consolidation that was filed on the land records, and it was never challenged. And B, was the zoning permit lawfully issued? And that answer is yes. So a permit was issued to build a house on a lot of record. That is the only issue relevant to this board tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, again, I don't, it was said that they were, they were never notified, but you're saying that it was in the New Haven Register on April 26th, 2016?
Yes. Lot line adjustments are typically not put on the agenda, because they're considered ministerial acts.
Would there?
So in other words, they don't have to vote on it.
Okay, would there have been any other, anything posted on the lot at that time, along with notifying in the paper?
No, it's, it's not, it's not a form, it's not like a site plan, or a special permit, or maybe an 824 public improvement that would go, typically go on the agenda.
Okay, so what, so what we're saying is, it was posted. They never knew it was, they had?
It didn't, doesn't have to be posted.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Well, that, that's what I, they don't have to post it, correct? Because it's a lot line adjustment, just the chairman is allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So it was kind of a sneak, it was kind of a sneak, I mean, it was kind of a sneaky way to create a lot, though?
Lot, lot line adjustments are done all the time.
I mean, after, after everything they went through, I mean, and then they come back and do this, I'm just stating my, my opinion.
The past history of it is kind of interesting, but it's not germane to what's before the board tonight. A lot, I can tell you the lot line adjustments are-
I understand that, there's nothing we can do about it, but I just think it was a sneaky way of creating a building lot, after all the history that went, went along with it.
Did you have a question, Sarah? No? Are you, you all set? You all set? Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Okay, I'm sorry, this lady.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the board would like to hear from me. I'm here representing the owner, the current owner of the property. I'm also the attorney who got the lot approved under the consolidation according to the regulations, so I'm here to answer questions. I agree with Mr. Harris's comments. Let me back up. My office is at 3 Lafayette Street, Milford, Kevin Crusaden for the record. So, I agree with Mr. Harris. What's in front of you tonight is specifically the issuance of the zoning permit, and what Mr. Harris didn't tell you is that by statute and by regulation, he has no choice but to issue that permit, because it is a legal lot of record. The, all of the comment, I don't know if you, if the board wants to hear responses to the comments from Attorney Berkey, or how the history of the lot came to be. There is some confusion with respect to the lot and the merger that took place in, you know, 15 years ago, 16 years ago now. The original lot, just, there was a subdivision map that was filed, and on that subdivision map, most of the lots were 25 feet wide. So when that merger decision was made, it was made as to one of the 25-foot lots, I think it was lot number 132 on the original subdivision map. Lot 133 was not subject to that merger. So lot 133 was the lot that was still a legal building lot, according to the subdivision map and according to the Milford zoning regulations. And then after that, a lot line adjustment was done. There was no requirement to do, make any notices to anybody, there was no mechanism to post any sign. The notice was posted in the newspaper after it was done, giving people the opportunity to appeal within 15 days of that, of that timeframe. So I don't want to get into any further than that, but I, unless you have some questions for me, I'm here to answer them about the legality of that lot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No, you just can't yell out, you just can't yell out. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Crusaden? No? Okay. Ms. Berkey?
I just want to respond to something that Kevin said. You know, there is a memorandum, and, you know, I encourage the board to look at the documents that were submitted. I don't think it's quite as simple as Mr. Harris, Mr. Crusaden would say, that this board has no jurisdiction over this. This was a decision made by this board, that these lots had merged. And if you look at the documentation, the minutes, from, from this board, it says that these lots were merged. If you look at the memo from Peter Crabtree, he says, "These lots are not eligible for 6.4." It doesn't distinguish between 132 and 133. And if we want to talk about a collateral attack of a zoning decision, that's really what we had here back in 2016. The Wrights were given a decision by this board that said, "You know what, guys, sorry, but those little lots in the back, those little slivers back there, they're part of your other lot now." And the Wrights could have sold the lot that, that they had with the sliver. Instead, they chose to wait 15 years and collaterally attack the decision of this board. They didn't appeal the decision in 2001, when this board, and Peter Crabtree, said these lots have merged, that that decision was done, it was final. And there's testimony in the record that the neighbors were under that impression, that's what they were told over and over again. And so now to say, "Well, you can't challenge this," although we challenged it, and we went through a different procedure, "But you guys can't come before the same board that made the decision in 2001 and ask for relief from this decision." I don't think it's outside your jurisdiction to look at the underlying map that Stephen issued the zoning permit based on. I think it's properly before this, and you have a statutory obligation to review an appeal of a zoning permit. And I encourage you to ask the city attorney if you do have any jurisdiction over this. It's not, while it might have been an administrative and ministerial decision, this is a significant decision in this neighborhood, and I ask that you folks treat it as such. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, any further comments? Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Mr. Harris, if the lots were merged in 2001, as she just stated, how could they then adjust the lot lines?
The merger question is not before the board. The issue, the only issue before the board was, was a zoning permit issued for a legal lot of record.
I understand that, but if it was merged 15 years ago, there would be no separate lots to adjust the lot line to?
These are interesting questions that perhaps should have been fully argued or back, back then. But again, the, the issue before the board now is, the plant, well, the planning and zoning, I'll just reiterate, and Danielle, you can, again, have the last word, is that an application was brought before the Planning and Zoning Board to consolidate these lots. It was approved by the, by the chairman, signed off, filed on the land records, advertised in the newspaper with no appeal. That closes all issue relating to the wisdom or not of merging or unmerging or consolidating the lots. Once it's a lot of record, it's a lot of record. So when the developer came in for a zoning permit, I issued the zoning permit, because there was a lot of record there. The how, and why, and when, and if are all moot questions now, because there, there's a lot of record, and I issued a zoning permit for it.
Well, I'm not saying what you, you, you followed procedure. I'm thinking, when they merged the lot lines, there was no lots to merge to, because they already had been, there was no lot, lot lines to adjust, because the lots had been merged, and there were no lots available anymore.
Well, that's a question that's, that's not germane today. The only, the, again-
But if, if, if that was the case, you know, if you go back to that one, we should never be where we are today.
You know, I can't speak to 15 years ago. I can only speak to the actions that were, that were taken. You know, there was a lot consolidation, okay. Whether it was, should have been done, or should not have been done, is not a question for this board. Now, an act by the, an action by the Planning and Zoning Board can only be appealed to Superior Court. So when the lots were consolidated, filed on the land records, that decision was advertised, was not challenged, so the Planning and Zoning Board's decision stands. When the developer came in to get his zoning permit, I issued it.
Okay, so what you're saying is, we can't overturn what was established by the Planning and Zoning Board?
The Zoning Board of Appeals has no authority to overturn a decision by the Planning and Zoning Board. Only Superior Court can do that.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Would you like to say anything else before we, before we close this?
Just for a matter of clarification, and I think Stephen did, or the chair clarified, it was a decision by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board. It was an administrative decision. It was not on an agenda, it was not before the board, it was not advertised in the newspaper. The applicant published the decision of the chairman in the newspaper. So there was no opportunity to, to, to speak before the Planning and Zoning Board about this. And again, I go back to the fact that this was a decision that was made, and for some reason, the owner, the same owner, 2001 and 2016, was gi, was given a second bite at the apple. So again, it's not where we would like to be. We would have preferred, if we had known about it, we certainly would have appealed that decision of the, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, but nobody knew about it. And so we're challenging the issuance of the zoning permit on the basis of a map that never should have been approved. And you can say, "Well, I don't know what happened 15 years ago." You know exactly what happened 15 years ago. It was before this board. We have minutes, we have a memorandum, we have extensive testimony as far as what was told by the zoning enforcement officer at the time. So it's, it's not an ideal situation procedurally, obviously, but this board does have the jurisdiction to overturn a zoning permit if it's wrongly issued, and we believe, based on this map, it's wrongly issued.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, the Zoning Board of Appeals made the decision in 2001, and around 2015, without any kind of hearing from Planning and Zoning, the Planning and Zoning Chairman signed off on the, on the, on the property?
And I believe what was done by the chairman was improper, under the regulations, given the, the standards set forth, and 2.3.1 of the subdivision regulations, given the standards set forth in section 6.4.3 of the regulations, again, as to Mr. Soto's point, these lots did not exist anymore. They merged into the remainder of the Wrights' property. And so those decisions were improper. And so then to issue a zoning permit, it's like what my mother said, "Two wrongs don't make a right." So to issue a zoning permit on the basis of a map that was wrongly issued, never should have been issued, doesn't mean that the zoning permit should then be issued and upheld by this board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No? Before we close this hearing, I mean, and if you want to leave it open for more thoughts to think this over, or, I'm thinking that we should maybe check with the city attorney before we go any further with this. You know, we've been given a lot of information, so, and I don't know if you want to make a decision right now, or we can just leave this hearing open. Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
I think we should check with the city attorney, because if those, you know, the legality of all this, so.
Okay, do we need a motion for that? Or can just leave this hearing open?
I need a que, if you'd like to ask the city attorney a question, I need a, a question.
Okay, go ahead. You need a question?
From, from the board.
Oh, okay.
We should ask the city attorney if these were denied in 2001, if, how could they merge something that, I mean, how could they adjust the lot line that's something of a lot that was, doesn't exist? I don't know the proper wording on it, but that's what I want to-
Or the action taken by the Planning and Zoning Chairman without a hearing. I don't know how we can clarify that, that there wasn't a hearing.
Well, lot line adjustment, they can do lot line adjustments without any hearing. I mean, that's just something they do.
Are we satisfied with that one?
So, exactly what is the question?
How can they adjust a lot line on lots that don't exist, because they were merged in 2001?
Okay, so how can?
How can lot lines adjust, be adjusted in 2016 on lots that were merged in 2001 and don't currently exist?
So would a question be, how can merged lots be consolidated? Is that a fair reinterpretation?
No, how can you adjust the lot lines of merged lots that don't exist?
Okay, how can lots, how can lot lines of lots that don't exist?
Stephen, do you want me to?
Be what, consolidated?
Take a stab at this, based on?
Read it back.
Okay.
If it's in the, if it's in the record, we'll, we'll just get it out of the record and not leave it on.
Let me just, let me just-
No, that's okay, just, just, we'll, we'll do this tomorrow. I will, if it's in the record, and, right?
Well, I'm not, I just want to clarify my phraseology.
All right, go ahead.
With Mr. Soto, if that, does that not?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Okay.
Hold on one second.
I'm not a lawyer.
Did you want to interject a thought? Yeah, I wanted to interject something. Wait a minute. Do we have to go through and list a question right now? We will not have an opportunity to think on this, and then provide further questions to the city attorney?
You can hold it open, you can hold this hearing open if you'd like, and-
I thought that's what we were talking about.
We are.
Yeah, well, so why are we tying ourselves into asking, you know, one question? I just want to know from an administrative standpoint, it sounded like we were saying this was the only question that we could an, that we could ask, and we wouldn't have-
You can ask whatever questions you want.
Okay, and we don't have to ask them right now and have them on the record, right? We can talk to the-
If you leave this hearing open, you'll have to wait till next month to tell me what questions you want asked, and that sets up an administrative problem. Because hearings, the hearing would have to be, hearings have to be closed 35 days after they're open, unless the applicant agrees to an extension. So the applicant will have to agree to an extension, and-
I mean, if, if the board wants to review, I know there's extensive material, and I know it goes back some time, if you want to review it and come back with a question next time, we would of course grant an ex-
and come back with a question next time, we would of course grant an extension to keep the hearing open, so you could ask the city attorney for a legal opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you can wait a month, you can formulate your questions. Next, if you leave it open, then come back next month and hand them to me typewritten.
Okay, Meg, did you have anything to say or we're all set?
No, I think that you're going to take the opportunity to formulate a question or more than one question. And so I'm just going to have the minutes reflect that a question was formulated, but you want more time to refine it.
We have one question that should be on the record already, right? The one that Mr. Sota asked.
I can read you what I captured, which is not verbatim.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
It was what I understood him to be asking. I said, I wrote, Mr. Sota asked if the Board wanted to consult the city attorney to ask how a lot line could be adjusted on lots that no longer existed because they were merged in 2001.
That's the question.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so this hearing is remaining open, okay? Okay, item number four. Okay, we're ready to resume here. If you just want to settle down, please. Go ahead, Mr. Secretary, item number four.
Okay, item number four. 117 Hawley Avenue, MBP 60/742/9 in a BD-1 zone. Variance of Section 3.8.4.1. Lot depth of 78 feet where 80 is required. Applicant Attorney Thomas Lynch for Anthony Capadicei, owner.
Good pronunciation, Mr. Vassino.
Thank you, Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickie and Boynton. My office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight with my client, Anthony Capadicei, who is seated behind me in the front row. Tony is the owner of this property at 117 Hawley Avenue. He's owned the property since 1988. And I hate to use the terminology that we're here on a technicality, but we are here due to the fact that he wants to ultimately develop this property. I'm going to talk in a minute about the BD-1 zone and the type of uses that are permitted in that zone. But this property, which consists of some 4,200-plus square feet in the zone, complies in terms of its square footage, it complies in terms of its frontage on Hawley Avenue. But because it's irregularly shaped, it's a lot that predates our zoning regulations, the old Woodmont maps back in the turn of the century. In this zone, a conforming lot has to have a depth of 80 feet. And with the southerly boundary being slightly shorter than the northerly boundary, we have a average lot depth here of some 78.5 feet. So we're a foot and a half off from the 80 feet that's required in this zone. So when we started off with our application, we, as you know, this did appear on your agenda, I believe, last month, and we withdrew it because of the fact that Stephen had the city attorney's office review the application. And rightfully so, under Section 826 of our general statutes, property subdivisions are not allowed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Board. The original map that we had submitted to you showed a division line down the middle of the property because what Tony wants to do is to divide the property into two lots and to have either two single-family residences or two duplexes, two family residences are permitted in this zone to be constructed. And the city attorney, I had discussion with John Bertram, and he said, why don't you submit a new map, not showing the division line so there's no confusion about whether or not the Planning and Zoning Board's power is being usurped by the Zoning Board of Appeals? So that's what we've done here. But ultimately, the goal is to divide the property. Currently, on the property, there's a very small 672-square-foot structure that's being used as a one-bedroom apartment right now. And as I said, ultimately, what Tony wants to do is to have two conforming lots to be subdivided with two structures on it. But we need the variance because the irregular shape of the lot creates a foot and a half shortage of the lot depth between the combination of the southerly boundary and the northerly boundary. And as I said, the property is located in the BD-1 zone. That zone, as you're familiar with, the center of Woodmont there, it's, the house is actually right across the street from the parking lot of Scribner's. Many, many years ago, that was downtown Woodmont. There was a post office there, there were stores there. It was the general business area of the borough of Woodmont. So that, that is the zone classification right there. And as I said, it calls for a dense form of uses. It allows for single-family houses. It allows for restaurants, eating places, mixed-use developments, all on 2,000-square-foot lots. So with that, that's the extent of my presentation to you. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So right now, this is a conforming lot?
It's a legal, it's a non-conforming lot because of-
It's a non-conforming lot, right?
Sorry. It's non-conforming because of this problem with the 78-foot lot depth.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a conforming lot.
Right now, it's a conforming lot?
Yes. We measure lot depth as the mean lot depth. So the mean lot depth of this lot is 80.5 feet. The southerly lot line is 75 feet, the northerly's 86. Add them together, you get 161. Divided by two is 80.5. This is a conforming lot.
So it's a conforming lot. So what they're asking for is to make in this property a non-conforming lot. And if we were going to give you the variance, then it would be up to the Planning and Zoning Board to let you have the subdivision.
Correct. That's correct. That is a tongue twister.
It is now a conforming lot.
Yep.
Okay. If we were to give them the variance, it would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board for a subdivision. And then you would have two non-conforming lots.
And I believe through the title search that we've done, it would be eligible for a free split. It wouldn't have to go through subdivision application because of the fact that it's a first split of a lot that was created prior to the institution of the zoning regulations.
Okay, and you also mentioned that-
Mr. Chairman, just for the Board's edification, you know, zoning esoterica on a free split. The lot that's split off, the so-called first cut, has to conform, and the balance of the remaining area also has to conform.
Which would not be the case here.
So in the end, whether you subdivide, resubdivide, or free-split land, you have to have conforming lots.
Hence the necessity of the variance request.
Okay, any consideration of, I know you mentioned two houses. I mean, this, this one house that's there can be removed, and you can have one duplex there because you can have two families in that area.
You could have a four, five-unit apartment put in there. There's a four-unit condominium right next door on the corner of Hawley Avenue and Village Road.
Okay, so we can put a building in the middle and we can put more apartments into it, is what you're saying?
Which my client would prefer not to. He'd like to keep it a residential character, a single-family, two-single-family structures.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
I have a question, probably for you, Stephen. You said that the depth is calculated by the mean when there's the irregular edge, and in this case, it's 80.5 inches. So if it were to split down the middle and make two lots, would one of them be conforming and the other not, or would they both be irregular?
That's an in-depth question for a lot of reasons. Let me just read into the record the definition of lot depth first. Okay, so lot depth means, this is from Section 11.2, the mean distance from the front line of the lot to the rear lot line measured in the general direction of the side lot lines of the lot. So if you look at your map, you'll see that one side, one side lot line is 75 feet, and the other is 86 and change. So you add those together, you get 161. You divide by two, you get a mean lot depth of 80.5 feet. So the lot conforms. Now, in my opinion, if the Board, I would rather not go down the road, I don't want to talk in hypotheticals. So I get what you're asking, but it involves a lot of hypotheticals. And I'm uncomfortable talking about hypotheticals. I would rather talk about concrete things. Again, my role is to guide you as to what the regulations-
Well, I mean, it's, in my mind, it's just a math question. If this were to go up the middle, what is the depth at that midpoint? And then we can find a mean from there, I suppose.
If you divide, if you divide the slide evenly down the middle, then one lot would have a lot depth of the minimum required, and the other one would not.
Okay.
And this is the problem-
But again, I mean, we're not looking at, the submitted map is a whole parcel, it's not a, it's not two parcels.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, let me ask you this then. What is, what is the hardship on this?
The hardship is the irregular shape of the lot.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Anyone else?
Mr. Lynch, can I? This is going to be unpopular with you, but the hardship of the lot is the irregular shape because you're trying to split it. It conforms as it is with that irregular shape right now.
And this gets into the discussion that we had with the city attorney, and the city attorney's point was we shouldn't be getting into discussions of splitting the lot because of the fact that it's not under the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals. But I'm telling you, that's the end goal here, is to split the lot. We originally had, and it goes to Sarah's math question, we had, we originally submitted a map that showed a line down the middle, and then you would have one lot and then the other one. And then you'd be taking the average length of the middle lot line versus the other one. And the city attorney said, no, just submit one lot, I mean, one map showing the entire parcel and seek the variance based upon the fact that it's irregularly shaped. But I'm being straightforward with you, the end goal here is to divide the property into two lots. And again, he could, Mr. Capadicei could keep the property as it is, tear down the house and maximize development by putting up four or five apartment units. He doesn't want to do that. He wants to put two houses.
All right, anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here opposed to this application?
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, in the BD-1 zone, one and two family uses are allowed.
Well, I had said before, did I, did I make a wrong statement in saying that they could, you know, a duplex could be built there?
You can have-
One duplex?
I will look up the regulations for the BD-1.
I have the regulation right here. It's one-family, two-family, mixed-use. Or he could file an application under Section 830G of our statutes and maximize as many units as he can put in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? No? Okay, and I asked for opposition, I don't think there was any. Okay, okay, the hearing's closed. So what are your thoughts? Do we have a hardship? No hardship?
That's-
Okay. Any more discussion? Any thoughts on what we want to do?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard that the lot is conforming as it is right now, right?
It is.
Okay. So-
But they can change the use just the way it is.
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Um, no, I read it closed. What are you thinking?
The frontage, is that 51 or 57?
You can ask Mr. Harris.
51? Okay, thanks. Those are going to be pretty small lots. 25 by 80?
If we're going that way, if you thought you'd want to divide it.
25 is all that's required.
25 is all that's required?
Okay, are we ready for motion? Do you need time on this one here too? We want to, let me leave this one open too? We'll have a full agenda next month. Ask a question, Mr. Hirsch?
The comment I have is, is the mere fact that it is an irregular shape sufficient to constitute a hardship under these facts when you have a conforming lot that he wants to divide?
Yeah, that's what we would be doing. It is a conforming lot, and we would be, we would be giving them a variance and making a non-
Right, but it's mere, but the only reason why I ask is because it's a, it's an irregular shape. Is the mere fact it's a regular shape enough to make it a hardship?
Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Hirsch seated? I don't believe so. I think Mr. DeVos is seated.
Why can't he ask questions? He's an alternate.
No, the hearing is closed.
Okay, let's put our thoughts together then. Mr. Hirsch, would you shut off your microphone, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Mr. Harris, if the minimums on these lots are 25 feet, what is, what is the setback in that zone on each side of the house?
Okay, setback requirements. Okay, so minimum requirements for the BD-1. Lot area is 2,000 square feet, lot width 25, lot depth 80. Those are the minimums.
Okay, but what about the setbacks on the house?
For yards, there is, front yard is optional. Side and rear yard is zero feet or four feet if a side or rear yard is provided. is zero feet or four feet if a side or rear yard is provided. So in other words, you could build, if it was a blank, if it was a...
A roughly a 21, 21-foot white house.
You could choose your own front yard setback. You could put the house right on the lot line, side lot line, or rear lot line, but if you wanted to set it back, it would have to be at least four feet.
But could you build it on both side lot lines, or no, just one? In other words, can you pick either side? You can't go, you can't...
Yeah, either side.
And then you have to have four foot on one side?
Your, your, your side yards can either be zero or four feet, your rear yard can either be zero or four feet, your front yard is optional. So you can build the house right out to the front property line if you felt like it.
So you're saying both side yards could be zero?
Yes.
Wow.
But if you wanted a setback, it would have to be at least four feet.
Did that help you?
BD stands for business district, so it's business district dash one.
Okay, that's why.
Just to be fair, Bill, I mean, they could build like that, even if the lot doesn't split, they could build like that, because the zone doesn't change.
I didn't realize it was business districts, so... Okay. Are we ready? Want to continue?
I mean, what's the difference if they put a two-family up, or they put two single families, and, you know, put some space in between them, I mean. They can build lot line to lot line, so...
We give them, give them this variance, then they still have to go to planning and zoning for a lot division. So when you give them the variance, it's like...
Well, I mean, that goes back to something we've discussed before. I mean, I, I don't like giving permission for something that hasn't even, isn't even yet happening. Like, we're saying yes to a hypothetical. It still has to go to another board, and we've had this discussion before.
Mr. Chairman, alternates should not be discussing this, this item after the hearing's closed.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to hold this open? It's up to you guys. We have to make a decision on this, so...
The question is, you know, what do we want in the character of that lot? I mean, like you said, they could build very wide onto that spot, or do we take what has been stated in open form about what they're planning to do, and view that as an appropriate alternative? I'm just hung up on the fact that I have a valid, legal, conforming lot right now, and splitting it, we're creating two that aren't. They can build, and they could, they could do something on that lot as it is, so that, that's kind of my stance. That's where I am. I'm having trouble getting by that. Do others have that viewpoint?
Well, the houses on each side of it have setbacks, so, you know, they're, they look at least five feet from the property line, so...
I make a motion to deny for lack of hardship.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to deny. No hardship. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied. Uh, yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have a couple-minute break, technical break. Mr. Secretary.
Okay. Item number five, 107 Melba Street, MBP 29 slash 587 slash 36, in an R5 zone. Variance of Section 3 dot 1 dot 4, west side yard of 4.6 where 10 is required, east side yard of 3.1 where 5 is required. Section 4 dot 1 dot 4, west eve projection to 2.6 feet where 8 feet is permitted, east eve projection to 1.1 foot where 4 feet is permitted. East deck projection to 0 where 4 feet is permitted, west front deck projection to 4.6 feet where 8 feet is permitted, east front deck projection to 3.1 feet where 4 feet is permitted, west rear deck projection to 4.6 feet where 8 feet is permitted, east rear deck projection to 3.1 feet where 4 feet is permitted. All to construct a new single-family dwelling. Applicant James Deno for Craig Southard, owner.
Hi, my name is Jim Deno. Jim Deno Designs, 93 Sudyside Court. I am the designer and applicant of this project. The owners of the home are here as well. It's Craig Southard and Jerry Southard. What we want to do, there's an existing house on there now, and we want to put a house in its exact footprint. What the only thing we want to do is, we want to do a full demo and move new homes towards the street, also adding an eight-foot deck on the water side, which is equal to where the existing house is. The existing garage will stay in its present location, and I designed a new roof system to create, one, a much more desired look, and two, to create new storage above. But the, like I said, it will stay in the, in the same footprint. We'll also be adding side stairs on the east elevation to access deck and rear side elevation, leaving the west side totally open for emergencies or, so they can get front and back. You'll notice, too, our height is three feet below of what the standard is. We're allowed 35, I'm at 32, to our midpoint. At this point, if there's any questions?
Yeah, you started out by saying you're building this, this house on the same footprint.
That's right. I, I did, I did. I am, the width is what I meant, I'm sorry.
The width, you mean?
Yes, yes, sorry.
So what is, what is the overall length on this house?
I believe it's, it's on the print, it's, it's about, I don't have a floor plan in front, I think it's about 49 feet, 51 feet? It should be right there.
Can you, can you tell us the square footage on the old house versus the new house?
Yes, the old house was about 2,500 square feet.
This one's three floors, what's this one?
I didn't calculate that, but we're going to be around, we're going to be around 3,100 square feet.
Would you mind taking a minute to calculate that for us?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. Somebody got it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you looking for the, the length of the house? Was that, was there a question about that?
No, no, we were asking, we were asking the square footage.
Yeah, but if you have it, we'll take it. That'd be great.
I've got 57.
Uh, it's 50 feet at the first floor and 57 feet at the second floor loft.
Okay.
17.3 feet wide.
Yeah, it's about 25, 28 hundred.
17.3?
28, okay, yeah.
Yeah, he's saying it's 2,800.
Yep, okay, that's about what we counted out, too. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sorry. And also, you'll see on the site plan that there was, on the existing house, there's a lot of concrete. We're going to remove quite a bit of that and put grass, okay? And, uh, other than where the car goes into the garage, we'll keep the concrete there, and where wherever walkways are.
We're, we're just looking at, I mean, you have a multitude of variances here. It's like, you know?
Yeah.
This board here, usually we have somebody come, and, and, two or three, but I mean, you have like a, I haven't counted them here, so it's just like...
That's Steve's fault.
This, this house hasn't been built yet, so it's like, we need a hardship also. Give us a hardship.
Well, the hardship is just an unusual lot. It's an unusually small lot.
It's different from that lot as compared to the lots that are near. I was by there today, I was looking, there's a lot of houses side by side.
Yeah.
All the lots are almost similar.
Yeah.
So there's, so we, we need a real hardship on why we would go and build this house.
Well, the existing house right now is 17 feet, okay? Right now, it's 4.8 on the side, it's 3.3 on the other side. That, that's all we have to work with. So what we are trying to do...
Well, you know, the other side of it is, you have a lot, and, and, you know, that's what you have. It's like, you know, we can, I'm thinking, the house should, you know, be built to suit the lot.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is, we're also trying to improve on it by moving it more closer to the street. Okay, and what we're asking for is that deck, which is eight feet. We're asking for overhangs, which is more, is two things. One's an architectural element for that project, the other is to provide more shade, because the sun beats down in that particular area. We've done many houses in that area with a bigger overhang because of the sun. So that's one of the, I believe, what Steve's saying. The other issue is, we wanted to put stairs on the side.
Be stairs on the side of the house to get in and out of the house, so...
Okay, and that's, that's, that's the only amount of feet that we have to work with.
Okay.
We don't have a whole lot to work with on this.
Any, any other questions for this gentleman? You have any questions, Mr. Sota? No, not yet. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Craig Southard. My wife, Jerry, and myself are owners of the property. It's actually been in our family since 1972, and we've recently become owners a few years ago. But, I mean, I hear a lot about hardships and things like that, I, and I don't know if this is really a hardship or what, but I wanted to tell you the reason why we're doing this. We are one of the last houses in that area to be low in terms of not meeting flood zone requirements, not meeting things that we really should be addressing. We intend to retire there, hopefully in the next three or four years, and we have several grandchildren. We want to make our home safe. We're not trying to expand it on the side at all. The current house is the same distance from the property lines that we currently are having. We did want to lengthen that a little bit to get a little more space, because it's kind of a small house, especially when you look at some of the ones that are already there that are substantially bigger. But what we're, what, what brought us to do this in the first place is, we said, you know, we weathered the two storms, Irene and Sandy, and we got a lot of damage from both of them. We want to move to a place that's safe, that's moved back from the water. We love the water, but we're too close to the water, so we want to move it back 10 feet from the water from where we are. And then we want to raise it up so that it's above the minimum height requirement. I'm not sure what that is, but...
The 13.
Right, right now, it's, it doesn't meet that. So I don't know if that's a hardship or not, but it's, it's something we want to do to make it safe, to improve the property value, and to, you know, you know, improve the area in itself. And, and we're not asking for anything crazy. Like I say, if you saw the house, all we're really doing is moving it back 10 feet and adding some length onto it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Deno, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How many of these, these variances already exist with the present house?
How many what?
How many of these variances that are listed here already exist with the present house?
Well, presently, the, the setback issues, the house is, Steve, I believe the house was closer to the mean high tide. Is that correct? We needed 20 feet, 25 feet, and we had 19?
Uh, I'm looking at...
That's one issue, Joe?
The orig, the original house was 19.4 to mean high tide. This one's 23?
We're asking, it's 19...
Well, it's a great idea that you're pulling the house forward, but still, it's like I'm just questioning all the other variances.
Yeah, so, what, one's the overhang, correct? So we addressed the overhang. Was the other one the stairs?
Did you have a question, Mr. Sota, with the stairs?
Hey, Jim, why couldn't you get rid of those side stairs and take that set of stairs closest to the water and move it into the center, in line, keep that in line with the side of the house? Then you'd have a clear path on each side of the house, and you still have your stairs to get up on the deck, but you would eliminate all those variances.
We, we could do that.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is, also, you know, when you get the water rushing through, it kind of really flies through on each side of the house, and, you know, by having that clear, you'd also be preventing future damage.
Yeah, I provided pretty good flood vents, flood gates.
Yeah, but you know how that water rushes down through, and...
Yeah, I do, yeah.
But that would solve a lot of the variance problems, and I think it would satisfy the board here.
Yeah, I think we did the overhang. The other issue was...
The overhangs I don't have a problem with, because they're up three stories, you know what I mean? So it's not like...
Yeah, the other issue, I think, was the deck, and that is where the existing house was. So we're asking for that eight-foot deck, so we can have...
Well, it could still be eight foot, but you would just keep it in line with the house, the stairs and the deck in line with the house.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Any more questions for this gentleman? Is anyone else, I had asked someone if, if there's anyone else speaking in favor? We had one person come up. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed? Any more questions before I close this? No? Okay, okay, the hearing's closed. So there is room for adjustments.
I mean, the house is only, what, 17 feet, so it's a pretty narrow house. It's a pretty small lot, but if you move the, if you move the deck in and the stairs in, in line with the house, I think you got a pretty good design there.
Well, I mean, when we get these in front of us, and it's, it's a new house being built, it's, when you're asking for all these variances, I'm, it's like, why would you need all these? We would try, you know, we give variances, but this is a, a long list of them, so I think there's room for eliminating some of these, and, and I think we should deny this without prejudice, so they can come back with a new plan.
I make a motion to deny without prejudice, to give the applicant an opportunity to redraft the plans, bearing in mind some of the suggestions that we made.
Second.
We have a motion to deny without prejudice, and we have a second. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied without prejudice.
All right, item number six, 12 Parkland Place, MBP 39 slash 606 slash 6, in an R10 zone. Variance of Section 4 dot 1 dot 4, front yard deck projection to 17 feet where 21 is permitted. The applicant is Extreme Home Improvements LLC for James and Patricia Yaffey, owners.
Good evening.
Thanks, sir, go ahead.
Sir. Okay, my name is Matthew Martino. I'm the owner and builder for Extreme Home Improvements. I'm here representing my customers at 12 Parkland Place, who are here with us tonight. We're asking for this variance on...
Mr. Chairman, could I just interrupt for a second? Do you have any building plans with you tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please submit them to the board?
Okay, yeah, we don't have any in the envelopes here? Okay. Yeah, if you have extra ones, please bring them forward. Okay. Yeah, if you have extra ones, please bring them forward. Okay, thank you for handing those out. We didn't have them. Go ahead, sir.
So we're looking for a variance for the second-story deck off the front of the house to match the existing width of the house. Couple of different reasons. This deck is designed with a gutter system underneath it, a watertight gutter system. Due to the house being on such an incline, the water that freezes at the front entry creates a slip and fall hazard. There's no way to change that grade because of the, because of the slope and the buildup on that. Also, you know, lack of use of the property as it was intended with the water view and stuff like that. So that's where we're going.
What's the hardship for this, sir?
The hardship of the lot. Excuse me?
The hardship of the lot.
I forget how, unable to use the property as intended and financially, there's also a financial hardship involved with this as well. Obviously, it's a waterfront community. They had, they used to have a water view until the neighbors to the rear of them put up another structure in their, in their backyard, which blocked that view, and the safety concerns with the elevation on the front driveway. The whole front yard is a driveway. There is no front yard. And it's, it's literally an incline. So the water that freezes, when you come out of the front steps, if you, if you look at how that's set up, it's created a trip hazard and a fall hazard. Couple people have already fallen, which is why we designed the deck with the watertight gutter system underneath to help protect the front of the property for the egress.
Mr. Harris? They can build a deck on the front of this, right? It's a matter of how wide their deck, correct? So that's, that's the only reason for the variance.
I don't know how to answer that. Can, other than to say they're asking for a deck that's six feet deep, and that encroaches into the front yard setback for a projection?
So they could reduce construction of the deck and stay within the setbacks?
Goes without saying. I mean, it's hypothetical. I mean-
As it does.
You know, this is, the, the ask before you is the ask before you. They're asking for a six-foot deck. You know, if they wanted a two-foot deck, or a three-foot deck, or a four-foot deck, that would be, you know, this is what they want. So they came to you to ask for what they wanted. And it's up to you to decide if there's a hardship in the land or not.
I was by the property, and even if, what is the extension on this? It's going to be, it's going to be about six foot, correct?
We were looking for eight, but six is, six is doable.
All right. So, I mean, I, I realize even the house that's next to it-
Yes, sir.
Is out quite a bit further. Even when your deck is even put on there, I mean, you mentioned water view, and, you know, that's nothing, that, this, we don't take that into consideration.
I understand.
But even if, you know, where your deck is going to be built, even the way it's proposed, there's still, there's still some blockage right over there. I don't think it's, it's not going to come out as far as the house next to it.
Oh, no, sir, not at all. And the one, the one to the left side is out, is projected out further than theirs. So they go back on a line, but they all, they all have front yard, uh, front yard porches over there as well. But we designed it with the cable rail system so that it doesn't, it, it doesn't aesthetically take away anything from anybody. So it's a, it's a clear view through the railing. It's not a big gaudy deck like you would see somewhere else.
Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? You, you don't have to. I mean, if you're in favor, you can just say your name, your address, and you're in favor. That's all.
James Yaffe, Twelve Parkland Place in Milford. It's my house. I was just taking a couple of notes while we're here, but as you said, the, the setback of this house, the other houses in the house closer to the water definitely is further out than, than mine. And even with the deck that we're proposing, we will not be, it will not be out as far as that deck, so it shouldn't be, and the house shouldn't, shouldn't have any, anyone who's going to look through my deck is just going to be seeing the other house anyway. Any of the views would be diagonally out across, so, and with the cable decking, it's going to be essentially very, very unobtrusive, you know. I, also, you know, it's, it's a small piece of property. The only thing I have right now to take advantage of the water is, there was a view upstairs in my backyard, but my two doors down, the neighbor got a variance to put up a shed which blocked that view. And my little patio backyard is surrounded by six-foot fences, so basically I, sitting by the water, but I have no functional use of, of, you know, that location. So it would be enhanced the beauty and the, and the functionality and the value of the home to, for us to, to be able to, to use, you know, to have some, a deck in the front, because we can't use the driveway because it's too much up in an angle.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the driveway comes down on an angle?
Yeah, the, the driveway goes down at a, at a, you know, pretty good grade, and somebody's actually already, we're redesigning the front steps and everything because somebody's already slipped on the ice and been hurt. So the, the overhang will actually protect some of that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here opposed? If you're opposed, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Mark Reba. I live at Three Parkland Place, which is diagonally across from Twelve Parkland Place. My first question, excuse me, before I make my point, make my points, is that the letter that I received notifying us of the variance request indicated that plans were on file at the city zoning office, and I, I went over, and all I got was a, you know, was a sketch that showed just a square that indicated the setback request. So I don't know if, my question is, is are elevations and floor plans available to be viewed by the public? Was that supposed to be a part of what plans are, apologize, am I not speaking into this correctly? Are, are, are these elevations and floor plans available to be reviewed by the public? Number one.
The short answer is yes, and the, they were submitted by the applicant just tonight. So if you want to take, give them a set of plans, you can take as much time as you'd like to take a look at them.
Would it be possible for me to take a quick look at them?
He has one right behind him.
I don't want to lose my, my place. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
You can, right there in place.
If you'd like, we can, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, we can take a five-minute recess or however long it takes for the-
Sure. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, and you can look at this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we're, we're going to resume this? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I've seen the elevations and the floor plans. Thank you. I would also, I would like to ask the board to deny this application, and I would like some, to offer some points for you to consider in your decision. Back in 2010, an old home that was on this lot was demolished, and the current structure was put up. The builder, at the time, requested side yard setback variances and a front yard setback variance to construct the home. The, a group of neighbors came to a meeting like this and spoke against the front yard setback, primarily because, and, and I was one of them, so I'll speak for myself again. I'll speak for myself tonight.
While you're doing that, can you tell us what year it was? Because I can almost recall.
It was 2010. It was 2010 when the house was constructed. And so the, the board denied the front yard setback at that time and allowed the side yard from ten feet to five. So there have been some variances that have been approved on this structure at this point. And there really, there have been no changes in circumstances as far as this structure is concerned, the surrounding homes. If you drove by, Mr. Chairman, and anyone else on the board, you know, the area is very tight. The houses are close together and getting tighter because as homes are knocked down in the neighborhood, as this one was, the lots are maxed out as, as this home was. So I would like you to consider that the, the ruling back in 2010 not to allow a front yard setback would be pertinent to today. I would like to also point out that there is, in the back of the house, a four-by-seven second-floor deck and also a ground-floor patio, which I, I think may have been stated here before. Also, I, in looking at the application, I'm wondering why the application did not include a request for a side yard setback for this deck? Because back in 2010, and I can read it to you, this is the notice, I guess, that's filed with, after the zoning board votes. The variance was granted to vary section three point one, point four point one, to allow five feet, four feet to overhang, side yard setbacks in lieu of ten feet on both sides to construct a new single-family residence in accordance with an application dated July twenty-second. So the side yard variances were allowed back then to construct the residence. So I feel that this application that is before you is incomplete, because I feel that there should be, there should be a side yard setback request in it. Also, I'd like to comment on the hardship that was stated in the application, and I'll read that to you, pardon me, but, quote, hardship unable to use the property to which it was designed for. The lots zoned R-ten. There's a single-family home on the lot. And I guess beyond that, I would be interested in an explanation as far as, you know, what, what the hardship is, you know, beyond, beyond those facts. I guess basically, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, this, this deck is, is for a view of the water. It's a convenience. It's not correcting a hardship. And again, you know, this area is very tight. I would also like to say that, you know, granting variances like this would set a precedent that we don't need. And so I'd like that to be considered as well. And also, finally, I'd like to say that there is an alternative in the front of the house for a four-by-ten-foot deck to be constructed without a variance. So there, there is an alternative. And so that's my presentation, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone has any questions for me?
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Sir, you know, you're saying this is going to be put up for water view, but the site plan I'm looking at here, the house on each side projects further out towards the street than this deck does by five or six feet, so I don't, I mean-
Now, if you really, if you look at it from the right angle, I mean, you, you're not, you're not looking at a right, when you're looking out, you're not looking at a right angle.
Well, I'm just saying the house on each side of it is further to the street than what this deck is going to even be.
Well, I, you know, my claim to the board is that, is that this deck is for a water view.
Do you want to see what I have here? I mean-
Yeah, let's see it. Thank you. And-
They are showing the second-floor balcony in the back. It's over the first-floor one. It's on the plan.
I'm sorry, sir, I don't follow you.
You said there was a second-floor deck that they didn't mention, but it is on the plan.
In the back.
It is on the plan in the back.
Yes, sir.
It's above the first-floor one. It says second-floor balcony.
Right.
Second-floor deck.
Right. I think it's, I think it was five by seven. So I, I think I mentioned that there was a second-floor balcony in the back, four by seven, that was on one of the original plans, and there's a, there's a patio in the back. And, you know, these, these do grant access to the outside of the house. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else opposed? Please come forward.
Can I just bring these to you so-
Sure, you can bring them. Okay. This is the house that they want to-
That they want to put the deck on?
Yep.
That's Twelve Parkland, and I am Eighteen Parkland. I understand.
We can't capture the audio.
You, you have, you have to speak into there.
So you can hand out these things and then go back to the microphone?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Shavoni. I live at Eighteen Parkland Place. In two twelve, when I was thinking of purchasing Eighteen Parkland, I was informed that a variance was applied for in two-ten by the Affees and, which is right next door to me, and it was denied. I was, it was my understanding that since a variance was denied, I would not have to worry about any structures being built. Unfortunately, that's not true because I'm standing here. At the time, there were no plans available that I could look at to see what kind of structure it was or what it was going to be, but I knew that I was going to be impacted no matter what. Okay. There is no hardship here. I looked it up in the dictionary, and it said severe suffering. Nothing has changed here since two-ten. The house is still the same. No fires, no floods, no more land was acquired, and not getting a great view of the water is not a hardship. Everyone wants to be near the water, including me. If this passes, this will impact my views from my house. It will also impact my value of my real estate, and it will not look appropriate for the neighborhood. I believe that passing this variance creates opening a can of worms. Everybody wants to live on the water. Everybody wants a deck. Everybody wants to see the water. But granting this, the next person's going to say, oh, gee, look what they did. Oh, wow, well, they went out six feet. I got to go out eight feet. And it's just going to continue and continue and continue- And it's just going to continue and continue and continue. I love Milford. I saw it happen in Fairfield. I lived 20 years in Fairfield. I saw what they did to Fairfield Beach, and I don't want that to happen here. I love my neighborhood. I love, it's cozy, and it's quaint, and it's so nice, and I'm really proud to live here. And I just don't want this obtrusive thing to be hanging out. When I look out, sit at my kitchen and want to look out at the water, I'm going to be looking at this deck. I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this, for this lady while she's up here? What we take into consideration is the variances, of course. We don't take into consideration the view, unfortunately, you know, but, just so you know that. Anyone else in opposition? Okay, you may talk, the builder, what you, I'm sorry, the first gentleman.
Mr. Martin.
You can come up. You can come up.
I've never applied for any variance that, I'm not sure what she's talking about. First of all, I lived...
They were talking about the variances when the house was first built.
Well, she wasn't even living there. Somebody, you know, else was living there. She bought it after I moved in, but no variance. And I don't even remember a variance that was applied for when we built the house in the front to do anything. I'm not sure exactly what was, you know, I was here at the zoning meeting, so I don't remember the builder built the house exactly. The presentation of the house that we have right now is what was presented to the board. That's what, we did get some side variances. But the other thing is, so I'm not sure what, what the front variances was never, ever requested or denied. And secondly, I have the three-by-five privacy deck on my, off my bedroom, which subsequently that has, was built so I, between houses, I would have had a little bit of a water view. But the neighbor two doors down was given approval to build a shed. That completely obviated that. So, I mean, for some reason, that back deck was brought up several times as if that's a little, you know, it's about the size of this, you know, thing here. So that's, you know, I don't know, not quite clear what the implications of that are.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, the front, the front that we're talking about, was, do we have anything on record that, where the house is right now? Was there a variance given for the front at the time?
When they went to build the house originally, they asked for front yard variance and side yard variances. The front yard variance was denied. The side yard variances were granted. So when they built the house, they built it at 25 feet back from the front property line, and then they built it to what was allowed, five feet on each side.
Okay, so the front yard variance is on record as being denied?
Yes.
When the house was built?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, but it was ultimately, it was ultimately put within the 25 feet. The setback, the setback is conforming. So the variance wasn't needed, isn't needed for the front yard or for, at that time, because they set it back to the 25 feet, which is the required footage, I believe, Steve, correct?
It looks like it was 21 foot.
No, sir, that's, that's what the projection of the deck is where it would go to. So by right, we're allowed four feet, a four-foot projection. We're asking for a variance for the extra couple of feet on the, on the second-floor level only.
Any other questions for this gentleman? No? Go ahead, Mr. Soder. I'm looking at this picture here. You're saying the driveway pitches back from the curb to the house?
It's probably a 30% grade, if I had a guess off the top of my head.
From the curb, down, down to the...
From the curb to the house.
So you're telling me the water runs down into the garage?
No, it runs to the street.
Oh.
It's a downhill slope from the house.
So it goes the other way?
Yes.
So how is this going to stop any ice conditions?
Because we have the, we have the rain guard gutter system going on the bottom of the deck.
Yeah.
So, may I approach?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Okay.
So any water, any water that comes through is going to get trapped in the system, and it's going to, it's going to get channeled out instead of, you know, ponding up or freezing at the front entries.
Yeah, but if you have a 30% grade, that water's not ponding up anyway, and you just have to throw some salt down.
It freezes, snow buildup and everything else. Trying to get off that front step...
It's better than having a flat driveway, having a 30% grade to the curb.
I understand that, but trying to get off the...
Any runoff or anything's going right out the street.
Trying to get off the front, what I'm saying is trying to come down the existing front steps, off that first step, which is right onto a slope.
It's no different than any other house in Milford. You know what I'm saying?
Well, the ones over on Norwood that I just...
You've actually got a covered, you've got a covered front entrance and a little, and a little roof over the stairs, you know?
The stairs, the stairs don't have a roof.
Well, the overhang, the overhang on, over the garage door, it's covering half the stairs, according to this picture. You got a two-foot overhang right here, so it's covering about half those stairs. What, you got about three or four risers going up there?
Yeah, four, I think.
Yeah, so it's covering that over, that's a two-foot overhang. It's covering two of them.
And that's what I was getting at, because we're allowed four from this projection. So we're only, we're only technically looking for another foot.
You're allowed, you're allowed four foot from the facial board of that overhang?
Correct.
So what's that two foot, that overhang now?
Yeah.
So you could go out six feet from the face of the house without a variance?
Sure.
Okay, I don't think you... Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? None? Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
I have an answer for you shortly. Well, they can build this, they can build in front, but it'll be smaller. So should we begin... He's saying they can build six feet from the face of the house out. He's asking for eight feet, so, I mean, do you really need the extra two feet? You don't need a variance at all.
Right. I don't think that there's enough hardship or hardship at all that justifies us to grant beyond what they can build within the setbacks.
Six foot is plenty, I mean, by the width of the house.
The fact that you can still build a deck without asking for a variance, I don't see why we would grant any more than that.
Make a motion to deny on the basis of no hardship.
I second that. We have a motion to deny, and we have a second. Mr. Soder?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
I'm with the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion denied.
Item number seven, 38 Milford Point Road, MBP 6/88/12, in an R 7.5 zone. Variance of section 3.1.4, rear yard setback to 16 feet where 25 feet is required for building addition. Applicant James Alicky for Joe Casey owner.
Good evening, everyone. James Alicky, 190 Anderson Ave, Milford, Connecticut. I'm with Alicky Enterprise LLC. We filed a variance for our project, and what we're looking to do is we have an existing rear deck, and we're looking to stay and just close in this rear deck so that we can utilize our kitchen space. What we're proposing to do is just basically put up two walls on the first-floor deck to, so that we can close in the kitchen and make some room. We're not looking to change any of the existing footprint at all on the property.
Why do we need a variance on this, Mr. Harris? Saying everything is established?
It's within a rear yard setback.
Just because they're closing it in, but everything is already in place?
The proposal is to convert an open deck into expanded living space, expanded kitchen, which is inside the rear yard setback.
Is this right off of the kitchen that's there? You just want to...
Yes.
It's to make the kitchen bigger?
Yes, yep. And next to the deck is also a closed-in area of the house also. So we would be able to, if you look at existing story one to see where it's noted. So basically, we want to tie the deck into that so that we can have one square area to work with.
There'll be no deck after that, correct?
There will be no deck, and the existing stairs would remain where they are.
Okay, any other questions? No? Anyone else speaking in favor? I have to ask this, there's nobody behind you, but, anyone here opposed? Any further questions for this gentleman? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay, we'll be right with you, sir.
Yeah, it looked like behind it was the marshland and the water, right? Yeah.
Make discussion, or you already kind of made up your mind?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. I mean, it's existing deck, he's closing it in, kitchen space.
Agreed.
Make a motion? I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship of the shallow depth of the lot.
Motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Soder?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved. Okay. Moving down the road here, we're into new business now. You're welcome. New business? No, nothing new. Okay. Old business?
Staff update?
Can I just put a couple things out there? I got one bit of feedback about the new procedure for emails and then paperwork shows up at the meeting. Seemed to work okay.
I'm not happy with it, but...
And we have, we have a new member. We also have a new member who's not here tonight.
All right, well, as far as the new, the new member, we'll approach him, we'll find him. Okay?
Okay, I also had one more question, and this was probably for Stephen. As far as the item that's held open to collect questions for the city attorney, is there going to be a response mechanism for collecting those prior to the next meeting? Like, maybe responding to the minutes? Or, I mean, is there going to be a mechanism?
I'll forward the question, after consulting with what the minutes say, I'll forward the question over to the city attorney's office for his answer.
I'm just wondering if others had additional questions. Are we going to...
Additional questions would have to be formulated at the public hearing.
Okay.
So if there's an additional question that you guys want to ask the city attorney about 40 Crabtree, next month is the time to do it.
Okay, we have one?
Daniel, I mean, it's assuming that, that the applicant will concede to an extension so you can get an answer, which is why I was, I was pressing for, give me your questions now.
I think she said, Stephen, I think she said on the record she was, she was agreeable to the extension.
Most likely she will.
You want it in writing? Yes?
You know, I can't speak for the applicant, but most likely she would extend.
She said it on the record.
Right, I think I heard it on the record.
I know that, but minds can change.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So we have, we left it open, so if we have additional questions other than the one that's in the minutes, we need to prepare them in advance and then state them in the next meeting so that then they can be asked forward.
Correct.
Yes, and the applicant would have to...
But then we'd need another meeting for answers.
Okay, thank you.
They got the time to do it, so, okay. Let's see, acceptance for the, of the minutes from December 12 hearing. Did we look, we looked them over? We always do?
Yeah, I read them. They look fine to me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Let's see. Applications for February 13th. And this, we missed, we missed Valentine's Day this year. Applications, how many? We have one hearing open?
We have one that was postponed.
I don't think anybody's filed yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This, this meeting is adjourned.